For order this regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Desiree, could we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Do y'all please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next regular commission meeting will be Tuesday, June 22, 2021, 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers. Item five. Items from citizens present. Anyone wishing to address the commission at this time with anything not related to something already on the agenda, we will listen to. Seeing none, we'll move on to item six A. Deliverate an act on approval of minutes for special meeting held on May 19th, regular meeting May 25th, and special joint with RPS held on June 1st, 2021. Have had a chance to look up the meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve those three sets of minutes.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item B. Deliverate an act on ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Raton and Asmi Local 1601. Mr. Berry or...
Mayor and Commissioner, there has been a collective bargaining negotiation between the city of Raton and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 18. That is generally the blue collar employees of the city of Raton. Our lead negotiator for the city of Raton was Mr. Jason Phillips, the Public Works Director. He has put this agreement together and has been approved by the Asmi Employee Group, and it now comes to the commission for your consideration. Mr. Phillips will give you the highlights of the agreement.
Ready.
Mayor and Commissioner, you have the agreement in front of you. It is first in my time a four-year contract term. The parameters of the agreement are in line with what we discussed going into negotiating strategies. The union has voted on it and unanimously ratified it from their end. It's a four-year deal that is front-loaded, but it is a good contract, I believe, for our folks. It's a 3%, 2.5%, 2.2% term. But it catches us up some with what the national average for that position is, but we've got a small group that's worked hard, and I think that the efforts that they've done are worth the raises that they've received, and I would recommend that we approve it.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Phillips. I want to commend you and your staff for getting this done, and a four-year agreement, that's great. That's awesome.
We feel pretty good about that. We'll all be a little older when we do this again.
Absolutely. Any questions, your comments for Mr. Phillips?
I will move to approve the ratification of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Raton and Asmi Local 1601.
Well, second, we have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any further discussion? Desiree, I think we should probably take a roll call vote on this one.
Okay, Mayor Sagata.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for this part of Public Works. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Item C. Deliverate an act on recommendation of bid award for Byron Whittier project. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, generally, I'll make some general comments about the project here. This is a project that we had applied for municipal arterial project funds back in 2020. We were awarded a grant from New Mexico DOT. The total funding of that grant was about $300,000. It was exactly $300,000, as a matter of fact, with the city committing 25% of that amount to the project. The city did retain the firm engineering analytics. We do have Mr. Tyler Davis, the design engineer, present here. I'm going to have him come up and talk about this project as well as the next one. But Tyler has completed the design of the project. We have requested bids. Did receive a couple of bids on this. It is a competitive project. One thing that we found with bidding in the current timeframe is that commodity prices have gone up significantly. Asphalt is more expensive than when we began talking about this project back prior to 2019 or 2018, and that's based on a crude oil price of around $70 a barrel, so it's gone up significantly. And really, as we talked about with CDBG, the costs are higher than we had projected a couple of years ago. And so on Byron Whittier, we are... I'll just kind of get to the bottom line. We're about $88,000 in excess of the grant funds. To go forward and build the project as designed, which I would recommend to you, we would go to the gas tax street improvement fund. So we're doing pretty well on the gas tax. We do have funds to complete the project. If the commission would like to phase the project to get closer to the budgeted amount, then I think the recommendation would be to cut out the Byron resurfacing portion of the project. My recommendation to you would be to bring the extra money to it and build the project as is. But, Mr. Davis, maybe you can tell us about the project.
Absolutely. So Mayor and Commissioner, this project is located between... Well, it's on Byron Avenue between Second Street and Whittier, so right along the Kmart. And then it's also Whittier Avenue or Whittier Street from the Clayton Highway to Byron, which is the Kmart, so kind of that commercial district over there, just north of the Kmart. The project includes milling and just rehabilitating the pavement surface out there. It's not in great shape. Right now, there's a lot of utility patches. And the other thing we were hoping to add to this section was drainage control, so curb and gutter, and then also some sidewalk along Whittier Street. There's quite a bit of foot traffic that goes along Whittier, going to the Kmart, as well as some of the other facilities over there. So that's the full scope of the project. The project also included replacing some really rusty storm drains that cross Whittier Street at Colfax, so probably about the midpoint. Those culverts are completely rusted out on the bottom, and then it also looks like some of them have been collapsed, you know, at the midpoint, so they're essentially beginning to fail. So the project includes replacement of those storm drain culverts to kind of make sure that the drainage is established and maintained through that area. There used to be a really heavy runoff that went through there, and part of that got rerouted a few years back with the DOT project on Second Street. But still, during these major storms like the one we got recently, it's definitely good to maintain the drainage ways. So that's the majority of the project. There was a few, actually. We've met with Jason Phillips and Scott Berry beforehand. One, the design was, I'd say, 95% complete, and we tried to do a few cost-saving ways after kind of getting a hint at the increased, you know, prices for this year, mostly due to the pandemic and material costs being on the up. So we did remove some of the concrete driveways that we had originally planned. We reduced the sidewalk width and tried to kind of just skimp on that a little bit. We are going to keep all the existing signage that's out there, and then we limited the mobilization to 7% because we also had three projects total planned for the same area, so the CDBG Third Street project as well as the Train Depot parking lot. So between those cost savings, we were trying to bring the cost down as low as possible. We did get some good competitive bids. I think these are actually better than some of the other prices we've seen this year. So overall, we're pretty happy with the bids received, and like Scott Berry mentioned, we recommend moving forward with the full award of the project if the city has the funds available.
Alrighty. Any questions for Tyler or Mr. Berry? Good job. It's a good project.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation for bid award for the Byron Whittier project to Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling.
We have a motion and a second to approve the... To award... Yeah. To approve the recommendation of the bid award for the Byron Whittier project. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could, I would just add in for the benefit of people listening. The bid of Rocky Road Gravel was $316,475. That was corrected. That's actually a little bit less than the engineer's estimate, so we're pretty happy with... And we did get three bids, so it was competitive, but we're pretty happy with that bid.
Cool. Thank you. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D. Deliverate an act on recommendation of bid award for the Depot project. Tyler, I guess you're up. For Scott?
I'll give you a broad brush and then turn it over to Tyler. But the Depot project is something that we've talked about here for a while now, and this project is primarily funded with grant money that the city of Raton received from Federal Highway Administration many years ago, decades ago, actually, and the programs don't even exist anymore. It'd be the same funding that the city used to build the multimodal facility, and we have approximately $200,000 of residual funds. We asked if we could bring this to improvements to the Depot. An issue with the Depot when you want to work on an iconic historic building is there is a lengthy environmental process. And so we did retain engineering analytics to design a project within the budget of the funds that we have and without really doing anything to the building because I think you could expect a process that could go on for years when we get to the building. So basically, we're looking at improvements to the parking area and drainage around the building. We're not really touching the building, but we do plan to come back in an additional phase or in additional phases and renovate the building. So we did retain engineering analytics again to do the civil design on paving and drainage improvements. And I'll turn it over to Tyler.
Sure. Yeah, so as Scott mentioned, this funding kind of stems from, I think it's been around for 20 years or so, and it's what funded the multimodal or the Heritage Park project that's just to the north of the Depot. And so we essentially, you know, the city kind of reached out to us and tried to utilize the little bit of funding they have left to build something of value. So we did a design for a parking lot and drainage improvements to kind of get rid of the big ditch that runs through there today. Kind of the thought process between that was for the events that go on on First Street, including the Fourth of July fireworks and everyone that parks down there for parades and such, we wanted to have something that's a little bit safer for people to park, people to get out and walk around on, as well as to kind of control the drainage through the area. First Street gets a lot of water, everything that, from the top of the hill, makes its way down to First Street at some point, so it's good. It's really important to keep that water moving on. And I think that there's been some pretty significant improvements that are noticeable from the First Street project that's just adjacent to this. So I think along with the Great Blocks project that is just kind of wrapping up now, this really highlights the downtown area and really makes it a desirable place for people visiting to be, go to the Train Depot. So as Scott mentioned, we do have items like pavement, valley gutter that goes through the parking lot, essentially a concrete cutoff wall that is the edger for all the pavement so that it doesn't heave over time. We had some... We also had a couple manhole adjustments, and so that's just when we raise the grade in there. They have to adjust the existing utility covers to bring them up to the finished surface. And then we had some deductive alternates in case the bids were too high. One of those was landscaping gravel mulch, essentially to match the First Street project and kind of fill in the void spaces, so it just kind of buttons it up. And the second was a concrete rundown flue, which is a kind of a little concrete ramp to control the drainage and kind of just meet the difference in grade from the new parking lot elevation to get it back into the ditch but downstream of what's known as the stinky tunnel, the pedestrian crossing there. So the bids we received, we received three bids. Architletic Construction, HO Construction, and Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling. Rocky Road actually provided a bid that was lower than the engineer's estimate slightly. I think part of the reason for their lower bid than everyone else is that they have essentially been awarded the other two projects or were the low bidder for the CDBG as well as the Whittier Byron project, so they gave a lot more competitive bid on this one. So if they are awarded this project, they will... They'll be spending some quality time here in Raton and working on all three pavement projects this summer. So this does exceed the small amount that we had to do the project by about $7,000, which is actually less than we estimated it would be. But overall, it is really close to the proposed cost that we had for the project. So engineering analytics, we'd like to recommend the full award of the project to Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling for the total base bid amount of $148,461.
Alrighty, thank you, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler or Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I would point out that we would go to the General Fund Reserve for the additional funds. I did talk to Greg Heitman at Federal Highway Administration this afternoon, or the mayor and I talked to Mr. Heitman. He does concur with the action of awarding by the commission tonight. He just asked for, in anticipation of closeout of the project, of course, being the federal government, there is an accounting procedure. There actually was two grants originally with a match requirement for this, and because the project is stretched on for a number of years, there's going to be a challenge in adding everything up and closing that out. So, of course, they have a good accounting manager, and we have, you know, a really strong treasurer slash clerk. So we will do that, but Mr. Heitman did concur with the award tonight by the commission.
Alrighty. Can you refresh my memory? How far south does it go past the real stinky tunnel?
Pretty much essentially ends there. So it goes from the old past gallery all the way to the pedestrian tunnel there, the stinky tunnel.
I know.
You are a beautiful tunnel.
That's right. That's right. The beautiful tunnel.
Sounds a lot better.
We'll have it stay hard.
I think one time, Mr. Berry, there was talk of possibly some lighting there. Is that something we could look at in the future or...
We will have numerous additional phases to this, and, you know, I think that, yes, absolutely, it's essential that we have strong lighting on the property now that we own that. But it is our plan to come back and restore the building to an original condition and open up the lobby again. I don't know if you've been in the lobby in recent years, but it was partitioned off to a very small space. We'd like to not only restore it, but open it back up, make it, you know, a gathering place. And it's not a big space, but we want to restore it to what it was, and, you know, I think life's a great idea.
Cool.
And if I might add, I would just want to throw in that the First Street project with the new lighting that's on the east side will hopefully help kind of illuminate the parking area. Before there, the lighting ended essentially just north of where the pedestrian tunnel is, and now it extends all the way to Rio Grande on the east side of First Street down there.
Oh, okay.
So, brand-new shiny lights.
There we go. Alright. Took care of it already. We have a motion and a second to accept the bid award from Rocky Road Gravel and Well Drilling for the Depot project. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Barry.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Christian.
Item E. Deliverate an act on MOU, the third annual renewal between the city of Raton and Schuler Restoration. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your package you have amendment number two to the memorandum of agreement. You also have a copy of that memorandum of agreement between the city of Raton and Schuler Restoration. It was effective in August of 2019. It does make an allowance for annual renewal up until the end of the fiscal year in 2023. As a theatrical manager, Mr. Billy Donati walked in right on time to come up to the microphone and give us the Schuler Restoration Corporation perspective on the agreement. I would just say that we appreciate the management of the Schuler group. Very strong partnership. This works great for the city of Raton. We look forward to getting back to having events at the Schuler again. We've missed some great events during the past year, but we really value the partnership. I think it's worked very well. Certainly have my recommendation for the amendment and the continuation of the management contract.
Alrighty, Mr. Donati.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you very much. Schuler Restoration stands pat. We're very happy with our arrangement. We had a couple of minor changes that were just some words and punctuation, et cetera, but we are happy with the agreement as it stands right now. It was so good to get kids and people back in the theater this past weekend. It was just so good to get them back in. And the Santa Fe Trail School for the Performing Arts, they did auditions, so they're going to come up with a show in July. And then August looks pretty good. We've got several things going on in August, so we're hitting the ground running. New light system worked really good. For the most part, remembered where all the switches were, so... And again, that's another partnership with our different foundations, all of our businesses, our private citizens, they all have a stake in the Schuler Theater, and the city of Raton is a big partner too as well. And I think we're all moving in the same direction, so...
Did they get enough kids to fill all the parts of the play?
I don't believe so. They're going to go to another show. They were going to do Bugsy Malone, which it was 30 or 40 kids, and they got 20 some, so... But it'll still be...
It'll still...
It'll still be good, yeah.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Donati? Appreciate what you do, Bill. We really do.
We're happy to renew this every time.
Every time.
So I will move to approve the MOU, the third annual between the city of Raton and Schuler Restoration.
We have a motion and a second to approve the MOU between the city of Raton and Schuler Restoration Corporation, Inc. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Donati.
Thank you, Commissioner. We love the Schuler. We all do.
Absolutely. Okay, item F. Deliverate an act on an operating agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County Senior Citizens, Inc. I'm going to abstain from this. However, I will do the presentation since my program manager decided she was a little more important to go say goodbye to her granddaughter who's going home to Texas tonight, so... I will give you the highlights of the operating agreement. This is something that we do annually with the city of Raton. It used to be called a memorandum of understanding, but now aging long-term, it's trying to get everything into like a boilerplate. All of their facilities are now having operating agreements with their local governments, whether it be county or city. Basically, the wording is pretty much the same. It points out what the city is responsible for and what the center is responsible for. For example, the local government takes care of electricity and water, sewer. We pay the gas, cable, insurance, maintenance and repairs. We've been kind of been blessed that we've been able to split costs with that on some, and then, of course, snow removal and other stuff. The city's been very, very cooperative and helping in getting rid of the snow in that. The term of the agreement is for a year. And in lieu of rent, we provide in-kind... We provide services to the community of Raton that we can write off as in-kind services. As you can see on exhibit A, based on these projections for fiscal year '22, we figured it'd take in about $74,000 in Raton. The cost to provide the meals for... Not take in, but the cost to provide meals for congregant meals, ravel go meals for Raton next year are estimated at about $74,000. For home-delivered meals, about $193,000 or almost $194,000. And transportation is going to cost us about $100,000. So you can see that we do provide services that more than cover what the cost of renting the building would be. So at this point, Madam Mayor Protem, I will turn the gavel over to you, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Does anyone have any additional questions for Mr. Berry?
I'd just make a comment that the building that houses Raton Senior Center is owned by the city. We are providing the building, and as the mayor said, certain amenities that go with that, maintenance and some operational things that go with the building. And in turn, Colfax County Senior Citizens provide the services as described. I would comment, I've got one thing marked here under paragraph two where it says Wagon Mound Senior Center.
We can change that. Yep, we can change that.
Yeah, good relationship here, again.
This is definitely an asset to our community. So I will entertain a motion.
I want to vote to approve the agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County Senior Citizens.
I have a motion and a second to approve the operating agreement between the city of Raton and Colfax County Senior Citizens. Any additional discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I will pass the gavel back.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Alrighty. Item G. Deliverate an act on lodger's tax non-promo fund professional services agreement between the city of Raton and the Center for Community Innovation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we talked about this item last meeting, last regular meeting, and we talked, we informed the commission that the request would need a little work to really come into compliance with some city standards. And we have been informed that the group will not pursue this proposal at this time. Now, it's related to film development in Raton, and I think we're building a strong partnership. This was a small piece of that. So the principles involved in this are in place, and we'll put a lot of effort into film development and talk about that much more. But this particular item is being withdrawn at this time.
Alrighty. Thank you, sir. We'll then move on to item H. Deliverate an act on authorization for sole source purchase for pharmaceutical dispensing machine, UCA pit for Raton Fire and Emergency Services. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I do have a couple of gentlemen here from Raton Fire and Emergency Services. Dusty Russell is the city's emergency manager. We also have Chief Anthony Burke on hand to answer your questions that you have with this item. And Mr. Russell will give you the facts and answer your questions on item H.
Alright, so what this machine is, is kind of like a vending machine, and right now, we're going to be using it for our soft goods and our medications. So one thing it's going to also help with is expiration dates and help us with inventory purposes. Our biggest thing that we've had issues with this year is gloves and PPE, and it's one of the things that will help monitor the usage and monitor the gloves, basically. We're on shortage right now. At the first of COVID, we could only order one box of large, one box of medium, and one box of extra-large. We've now gone up to where we can order a total of 12 boxes of gloves a month, but that is still a shortfall there, so... And as well as the gloves, again, it's going to help with the medications and trying to make sure we keep up with our outdates on that stuff, so... That's pretty much what I have for that, that guy right now.
Alrighty. What kind of drugs are put in, are going to be... All righty. What kind of drugs are put in, are gonna be dispensed?
So we put in there our, our medications that we carry in our ambulances, so like oral glucose, some IV medications, Epi one-to-one-thousand for anaphylaxis, and Epi one-to-ten-thousand for cardiac, and some other medications like that, so.
Additional ambulance meds?
Correct.
And this is just a better way to keep track of our inventory?
Correct. So it's gonna help us moving forward with a lot of consumables and everything else, so.
So Mayor, Commission, we have struggled with this a little bit because the information you see there regarding this vendor, really, we've determined this is a sole source for this type of equipment. The price that's listed here, I think the price we're asking the commission to approve is twenty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, eighty-eight cents. This, this sole source request and determination has gone through a lot of review by Michael Ann Attanucci, the city's chief procurement officer. You see the memo here that will be placed in the file. Typically, this is what an auditor would, the kind of information that they would wanna see regarding a purchase like this. And so Michael Ann is also available to answer your questions regarding procurements. This would be, again, general fund reserve would be the funding source on this.
Any questions for Dusty, Michael Ann, or Scott?
I'm just curious, have you, it looks like according to the memo that you've talked to other places that are using the same system, and it's really successful for them, and...
Correct. And there's kind of a, a back order on it, 'cause everybody is starting to go to it, and it primarily was because of COVID that everybody started going to it, so. But one of my counterparts in Clayton has it and swears by it, so.
How many people have access to it?
So, all the EMTs will have access to it, but they'll only be able to open certain doors. If they're an EMT that can give narcotics, they can open that door. If they're not, they will not have access to that. So it's just kinda dependent on what level you are, so.
And as far, I guess for Michael Ann, as far as the sole source determination, have we run this through the proper channels yet, or do we need to approve it before that happens?
So we've already, one of the requirements to make a sole source purchase is that you have to post it on the website for thirty days. So we've done that. This is the form and the information that was posted, and there was really, nobody reached out to us. There was no comments or protests, so we would be good with the approval this evening to move forward with the purchase.
All righty.
I will move to approve the authorization for sole source purchase for pharmaceutical dispensing machine, UCA PIT for Rattown Fire and Emergency Services.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase through a sole source for these, for the pharmaceutical dispensing machine for the fire department. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on purchase of medical oxygen, oxygen generation system with cylinders for the Rattown Fire and Emergency Services. Mr. Russell?
Okay, so, this is gonna be an odd, odd deal here. Last year, through the state EMS grant, we had put in for a special project, and it was to get one of these medical oxygen generators. And this was something that Chris had put in before he left, and we were awarded that grant. As time has been going on, we've been looking at it, wondering what to do here, and we were awarded the twenty-six thousand dollars, of course. But as we're looking into it, it's gonna cost us way more than that, around a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, I believe, or a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And the quote that was twenty-six thousand that gave us that, that grant was not for elevation, so that's why such a difference there. So what's, what we're looking at, I guess I should say, is we're gonna be turning back the money. I will write a letter tomorrow letting them know that, you know, this was our prior chief's project that he had wanted to work on, and with trying to work on this project, we found out that we just didn't have the funds to make this work this year, so. That's kind of where we stand with this one, and we may try it in a few years, but we've got some ambulance issues that we need to resolve before we move forward with this project again, so.
Okay, so, I guess your recommendation then is to pass on this right now?
Correct. If you're okay with me turning back funds for this project, I would appreciate that.
Anybody, any objections or questions? Michael Ann or Desiree, are we gonna need to vote to allow them to turn back the funds, or?
I don't think it necessarily takes action. It's not, we never received the money, so it's really not that we're writing them a check. It would've been a reimbursement.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So we can just pass it, we can just drop it?
I think the direction would be for Dusty to notify them, as he stated that we don't have the additional funds to proceed, and so the other funds would then be reverted within that agency.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we'll let her go then. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And as they say, you know, about gloves and that, I know a guy, so. So if you guys have problems, I know a guy.
Mayor, Commission, before we move along on the agenda, I'd like, and while I have a fire and EMS available, I'd like to talk about, Mayor, your conversation on the mayor's council to the governor's staff and the recent conversation you have. And if it's okay, I have the memo that you had given me, I'd like to distribute it to the commission. And I've asked Dusty to give us some updated information. So this is a copy of an email that is related to that conversation. I'll flip that over. And Mayor, I can try to discuss what was said in there, or I would prefer to you on that, whatever you would prefer.
I can, I can try. That was a week ago. You're, you're asking a lot. Last Tuesday, we had our, our bi-weekly mayor's council with the governor, and the governor did participate in this phone call. And at the time, she was debating on whether or not, on Wednesday, to announce whether or not three counties were gonna be rolled back to yellow, with one possibly being red, or if we were to stay the course with all of the state turquoise. In the conversation, of course, she was asking for us to give some, give and take, you know. So she came up with ten items roughly, and she asked us to commit to three of them. And if, if it was unanimous with the mayor's council that we committed to three items, she would keep the state turquoise for the entire month of June, with the hope of turning us free on July first. Some of that was securing commitments from businesses to host public vaccine clinics, to posting information on our website. We committed to doing that. All the mayors did commit to that, with the, the hope of the state going wide open on July first. It was, in, in talking with some of the mayors afterwards, it was kind of a weird meeting, because you knew what her answer was gonna be. It's just that it took a while to get there, you know? So we've, we've committed to do some of these. I think Scott and them have already got some of it on, up and going, and hopefully, it's what it takes. With the, we also talked about the vaccine sweepstakes. That was her big key surprise thing at the end. She's thinking with that alone, she was hoping to get about a twenty-eight percent boost in vaccinations, which would push us over the sixty percent, and at that time, be able to, to be open. The last numbers I saw, we were fifty-six and a half, I think, somewhere in there. I don't know. And that was a few days ago.
So I think my perspective, I did call a staff meeting, and I had assigned some individual items here to, and we got great participation from the staff, really being coordinated by Dusty Russell here. We're pulling that all together. And for me, we're worried about local business. A lot of our local business are small businesses, mom-and-pop type businesses. It's hard enough to be successful in business when no one is holding you back, but when you're under restrictions, it's, it's very dangerous for small business. So, you know, I'm looking for the opportunity to try to have, you know, from a business perspective, a fairly normal summer. And if our participation on some very basic items here helps that, of course, we wanna, we wanna participate. We wanna be a good partner to that. Now, I've asked Mr. Russell to give you those updated numbers. He'll talk about, and of course, Rattown Fire and EMS has participated directly in the vaccination clinics from the beginning. We partnered with Colfax County Emergency Management, with MCMC, with Department of Health, so he's gonna update you on those things. I also reached out to some of our community partners, and I did talk today, today with Anita Flores. Anita is here today. Anita, for those of you who have not met Anita, is the executive director of Grow Rattown, is here as a community partner. I've asked them to help get out the good word. I think Ms. Flores would like to make a few comments to the commission as well in regard to this. And I think this is where we have success, is the collaboration, as we have throughout, throughout COVID. And so I think the goal is to, basically, with these ten items that you mentioned, is to increase that, that vaccination rate. We are committed to trying to help with that goal. But we're all interested in how far do we have to go? Where are we at right now? I think that the potential for the lottery certainly helps, certainly gets people's attention, so we wanna point that out. But I would like to go back to Mr. Russell here as far as the city's strategy, things that we're working on, and data statistics, where, where we're at right now. Dusty?
All right. So some of the things that we have worked on and moved forward with was putting some information out on the, the website. I've worked with Desiree the last couple of days. We've put out the frequently asked questions, information out there. We've put up a couple of dates out there, when the next clinic will be for vaccines, and some of the other entities that are participating in that, and when they will be. Right now, we, countywide, we're sitting at fifty-two percent that have gotten both doses of the vaccine, and then we have fifty-eight percent that have gotten single-dose vaccine. So we're, we're slowly getting there, but it's moving forward. Yesterday, Philmont did around a thousand vaccines for their staff, and I believe that was the number, a thousand. And so they're trying to get that, that side up there as well. We do have a vaccine clinic on Thursday, and we're looking at about fifty vaccines, and those are gonna be revax, so that's gonna be the, the second dose for most of those that had it three weeks ago. After this Thursday, it's looking like we may stop doing the clinics at the convention center and doing them straight from the Department of Health's doors, basically. So we'll know more about that on Thursday after we do this clinic and kind of move forward from there. Mesa Pharmacy has also been doing vaccinations, and they do them once a month, and they've been doing them the first Friday of each month. So if you are missing clinics that we offer here in town, there's also the Mesa Pharmacy Clinic. And right now, that's about all I have.
All righty, yeah. You know, in the conversation, it was like she was really driving for us to ask more of our community, and Mayor Hall pointed out, Governor, we've already asked everything we can ask of our people. In fact, when I go into businesses, the managers turn around and go the other way. And so I think we've really, as a community, and as Colfax County, have really stepped up. I did point out to the governor that the Rattown Senior Center was the first senior center in the state to offer vaccines to seniors, which she acknowledged. She, she was aware of that. So I think, you know, overall, I think she gets it that we've done what she's asked, but still, she's gotta ask.
She's gotta ask.
Yeah. But I appreciate everything everybody's done, so.
So, just curiosity, is that, those, are those percentages based on an age level or entire population?
Entire population.
So, really, we could be sitting pretty well for, so are we counting from twelve on up or sixteen on up for vaccination?
That one's kind of hard, because you have...
Yeah.
So I, I honestly can't answer that one.
Okay.
Because you have the different...
It's just Pfizer that's doing twelve, I don't know.
Correct.
Yeah. So, so really, on the age level, we might be...
At sixty, seventy percent, or, yeah.
That's great.
Marty has a question.
How many of, do those numbers include people like myself who've gotten vaccines from someplace else?
Um, within the state or across state lines? You know, it kinda varies, because there's some of them that are entering it into NEMESIS and some that are not. That is one thing that we have found with some that have gotten their vaccine in Trinidad versus here. So it, it's hard to say, you know?
We could be over the sixty.
We could be over, but we just don't know.
That was brought up in the, in the conversation with the mayors along Portales, Clovis, and all that. A lot of their citizens are going over to Lubbock and that to get, get shots, and they don't know if the information is being transferred, so. We could very well be very close to sixty.
Right.
So can, that's one thing we could do, is announce how people can, they can register themselves if they got the vaccine, can't they?
I believe they can, yes.
So that would be a good thing to put out there, is how do people register themselves as having gotten it elsewhere?
Okay. We can work on that, putting that out there as well.
And I believe, any other questions for Dusty?
Okay.
Anita?
Ms. Flores and Anita, would you like to address the commission or give us your perspective? Anita has been a, a great partner to our efforts to support local business. You've heard Anita on the radio frequently, and I really appreciate, you know, all that she's done with the community and Grow Rattown, so, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me this evening. It was a little bit of a last-minute email that I received. I have, with my position and my job with Grow Rattown, I have the privilege of speaking to business owners, and they have graciously invited me into their private worlds, and, and we do have confidentiality with the conversations that we have, and I very much appreciate that. And I've been able to, to uphold the trust that we're desperately trying to build, because we do want to let them know that we're here to help in any way that we possibly can. Mr. Barry did bring the conversation with the governor that you had to my attention late this afternoon, so I apologize. My thoughts aren't a hundred percent formed, but I'm not necessarily here to speak on behalf of any particular business, or necessarily even as a whole, but maybe just to share really quickly that in my conversations collectively with businesses, they are probably, should they see the one through ten that the governor has given us, I think the questions might come out to be, is this, is this the exhausted list, or will there be another next month? I was privy to the Facebook Live that the governor did put out, I think it was mid-April. I apologize, I don't have the actual date. I apologize, I don't have the actual date, although I did record some of it because there was just a lot of information that came out. And she did specifically say, as of June 1st, if we got 60%, she was going to do away with the color. So I think a lot of businesses would, should they be here this evening, would likely ask you, will there be another top 10 for us next month? So humor aside. And, you know, if we don't actually get to that 60, one, will they allow a margin of error to be introduced based on the criteria that was just presented before me? Number two, what happens if 60 is not reached? What happens after July 1st?
And she was kind of vague there. If 60% is not reached, we'd probably stay in the condition that we are right now. And she did not rule out possibly going back, you know, to the three color or the four color tier system, but very vague. She's pretty positive we're going to get to the 60% by July 1st, especially with the sweepstakes. We'll just have to wait and see, you know, it could very well be another top 10 list out. One of the things she did ask is if we could ask businesses to, for the month of June, to at least have their staff still wear masks. You know, that's one of the things that she asked that we might comply with. But at this point, we're kind of, and we've always left it up to our businesses here in Raton to do what they felt was in the best interest of themselves and our community, so.
Absolutely.
I don't know about another list coming out, you never know. I think if, the closer that we're getting to 60%, I think we're going to be all right.
Yeah.
I think the comment is just kind of about, you know, is it a moving target out there? And we just don't really know. But I think we all understand that, you know, when you tell a business, hey, we're in turquoise now, so open up, you know, and you retain employees, you talk to employees into coming back, which is difficult to do in this environment. You buy supplies for your business, maybe perishable stuff for your business. And then a couple of weeks later, we say, you know what, we've gone backwards. You're going to have to shut down again or reduce. That's pretty stressful on these businesses. And so I think no one wants that to happen. We need some continuity. Business needs to kind of know what to expect. And I think that's what we're all, we're all kind of saying.
And she did state that after the first two weeks of June, they would reevaluate to see where we're at, see if there's any spikes anywhere, you know. So, yeah, she's kind of leaving a moving target out there.
Yeah, but I would just comment here, I think, I've talked to people who just don't like taking a shot.
Sure.
That's it. And what's called vaccine hesitancy in here. But I think more than protecting your own health, you're really doing a lot of good for the community. And now with the drawing, with the lottery, you know, that's a pretty good incentive for people on the fence about it to maybe come on in and get the vaccine, so.
Again, it would be helpful for businesses to know if the goalpost could stop being moved.
And that's why we stressed very, very much so in that last meeting. And I think she got it, but, you know, she still has the hammer.
But once we get enough people, you know, with the variants that have come up, it's pretty dangerous and risky to play with that fire, basically, of not getting the vaccine. So, you know, I think if we can get enough people vaccinated, I think we should be okay. And then that goalpost can be standard and state. I think it's key.
Is there?
To really ask our population to get that vaccine.
Did she give a date into the first two weeks of June?
She just said after a couple of weeks, her staff would evaluate what's going on to monitor if any spikes had happened. And they were watching variants. I guess there are a couple of variants in the southeast part of the state that are showing signs of possibly moving. But all in all, it wasn't that, it wasn't a positive meeting, you know. We did get some answers, we did get her to settle on staying turquoise for the entire month of June. So I think all in all, it was a plus. And I think our businesses can start to relax a little bit. But it's, you're still.
There's still some anxiety out there.
There is, there is.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys hearing me out. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before you, I've never met you until tonight, I haven't seen you. But I'm totally impressed with what you're doing for our community.
Thank you, sir.
And I'd like you to know that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Good things.
Glad to help.
All righty.
So we just checked on the vaccine. And if you have been vaccinated out of state, we are, or you are encouraged to go onto the DOH website and update your profile and put that information in. So that's something we'll work on putting on the website.
Okay.
And hopefully get some more numbers there.
All righty. Good job. All right, we got it. Have we exhausted that one?
We're done with that one, Barry.
All right. Item J, deliberate and act on the J Jack subcontract second annual renewal between the City of Raton and Human Resource Development Associates, Inc. Michael Ann, I guess, is up.
Mayor and Commission, as you will recall, probably last month, we approved the CYFD grant agreement and it was Amendment Number Two, which will be for fiscal year '22. When we were awarded the grant last year, it was for a four-year term, but it is renewable annually. So that will apply to our subcontracts as well. So we have a subcontract for the Girls' Circle and the Boys' Council Services, and that's with Human Resource Development Associates, Inc. So this would be our second annual renewal of their subcontract. And the amount that they're awarded is not to exceed $33,000 for the Girls' Circle and $33,000 for the Boys' Council. And I've also attached, from the Amendment Number Two that we just approved with CYFD, on the last page, it shows the amount that we were awarded for the total grant was $118,650. We did receive supplemental funding for FY '21. And that could be a possible, you know, possibility for this next fiscal year if funds are reverted. We may have an opportunity to submit another supplemental funding request, but that wouldn't be till later in the fiscal year. So if that does occur, we would have to come back and do an amendment to these subcontracts for additional funding. There is just one correction I need to make on the item number one. I put that it was July 1, 2020 and terminating 2025. It should be 2024. So I'll make that correction on the one that I have the mayor sign. So is there any questions? If not, I would recommend approval. And so what we'll do this evening is if both of these subcontracts are approved, then I have to submit per the terms of our agreement with CYFD to them for approval to subcontract. And once I get the approval back, then we would execute these and hopefully have everything in place to start the new fiscal year, July 1.
All right, any other questions?
I make the motion to approve the J Jack subcontract second annual renewal between the City of Raton and Human Resource Development Associates, and also item J, the same agreements with Raton and Peace Through Education.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the second annual renewal between the City of Raton and Human Resource Development Associates, Inc. and the renewal between the City of Raton and Peace Through Education. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item L, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-41, the election resolution for regular local election on November 2nd, 2021.
Mayor, I'm going to call on the city clerk again for this side.
All right.
So Mayor and Commission, you will recall, it's been probably a year and a half ago, we had passed an ordinance to join the, what is now called a regular local election. We typically would hold our elections in March of odd-numbered years. And so part of that approval was also to extend the Commissioner's terms to coincide with the next election. So our next election will be held November 2nd, 2021. Commissioner's terms will also run through December 31st now. And then the new candidates would take office January 1. So this is a requirement that we do this between now and, I think, the 1st of July. And so it's going to be a little bit different process than we're used to because we're always used to running our own elections. But the county clerk will now run the election. But you will see that we are going to have three positions for this election and they are all for Commissioner districts and they are all four-year terms. So also, the Declaration of Candidacy will be held differently. It will be held at the office of the county clerk and that will be on August 24th, between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 p.m. And then also, if there are any write-in candidates, that would be the following week, August 31st, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. So the Commission would pass this resolution this evening and then we would forward it to the county clerk so that they would know what positions we will need to be placed on the ballot.
All righty, any questions for Michael Ann? Seeing none, I entertain the motion. So move. A motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2021-41. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item M, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-42, Budget Adjustment Number 15, Fiscal Year '21. Michael Ann, you still there?
Mayor and Commission, as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, we're about three weeks away. We're going to try to make any necessary adjustments. We probably will see one or two more to submit for the final closeout. But I do have just kind of a series of line item adjustments within the general fund. And also, we are trying to close out some of our projects. And so the Aquatic Center Mechanical Project is one of those. We did have a slight increase for a chlorine pump body and labor. And so I am requesting a slight adjustment, which comes out to about $105 for that change in the scope of that work. But that project, as far as I know, is complete. And so I believe we received an invoice from the vendor who is Mozark and will be paying them once this adjustment is approved. And then also, lodgers tax, as we know, that fund was severely impacted due to the restrictions on our local lodging, hotels and motels. So we had initially estimated revenues of $400,000. I think we're going to be about $30,000 shy in meeting that revenue goal. But also, I didn't, for whatever reason, in the budget, calculate correctly the 60% transfer that goes to the non-promo fund. So if I adjust the lodgers tax revenue, projected revenue, to $370,000, then that transfer would be $222,000 to the non-promo. So that's kind of a correction to something that was in the budget incorrectly to begin with. And then also, at a previous commission meeting, you did approve the Center for Community Innovations Professional Services Agreement for the learning services. And so in order for me to pay the invoice for the, I believe it was the one-time fees, the initial cost was going to be the $9,500. We would need to approve that adjustment this evening. And then also, for the senior center window project, that work probably will be wrapped up this week, maybe next. So we're looking to close out that grant in this fiscal year. There was one change order switching two of the windows from fixed to operable. And so those windows have been received and I believe those are being installed this week. Under previous agreement, we had said that the city and the senior center would split the additional costs 50/50. So there's an adjustment just for the additional costs for those two windows. And then in the solid waste fund, we just have some line item adjustments. Some of these are line items that have funds available and it's really to cover the budget line item for the sanitation services, which have come in a little bit higher than what we initially budgeted. So I think most of these adjustments will get us through the end of the fiscal year.
And Michael Ann, if you would send me a balance of what we owe for that project?
Oh, I could do that.
Remember, I think it's like 174 or is it 173 something?
It's 173 something, so, yeah, I'll invoice you.
Because I know I misplaced it.
Sure, not a problem. I'll make myself a note.
Yeah, if you do that, I'll have Debbie write you a check.
Is there any questions?
I make the motion to approve that Resolution 2021-42, Budget Adjustment Number 15, Fiscal Year '21.
We have motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2021-42, Fiscal Year '21 Budget Adjustment Number 15. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item M, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-43, Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commission, I bring this resolution to the City Commission seeking your support of the expansion of the area of Sugar Tree Canyon State Park by acquisition of the Bartlett Mesa Ranch property. Now, I've given you some materials here in the way of background on this and I will go through some history just real briefly. Sugar Tree Canyon State Park, the City of Raton owns about 9,000 acres. I refer to the topo quad map that you have that's in green and white. And that shows you a boundary in red, in a red line. And it shows you the Colorado and New Mexico state line. And so Raton is in the unusual situation of owning a significant piece of property in another state in Colorado. We own about over 5,700 acres in Colorado, that's the Lake Dorothy area. And then 3873 acres in New Mexico, that's Sugar Tree Canyon State Park. You'll see that it corresponds to the green, which is canyon area. And on the map, the white is generally the top of the mesa. Now, from the beginning of Raton, both the community of Raton and the community really was dependent on railroad operations. The railroad was, found out that water is tough to come by right into Raton proper. And they looked at Sugar Tree Canyon for the development of a water resource. That resulted in the construction of Lake Alice, the first dam at Malloya, and ultimately Dorothy. And so there was shared interest there with the railroad. And then on March 1st, 1955, railroad operations had changed and everything that you see in the red was deeded to the City of Raton and donated to the City of Raton by Acheston at Topeka and Santa Fe. So since that time, Raton has been the exclusive owner of that 9,000 acres, approximately 9,000 acres. And we use it as our primary water resource. Lake Malloya has gone through a couple of dam raises to its present configuration. The City of Raton did lease the New Mexico area to New Mexico State Parks. So they would operate it as Sugar Tree Canyon State Park. Raton has also leased the Colorado property to Colorado Division of Wildlife initially. Now parks and CPW, parks and wildlife, isn't it? And generally, it's been operated a little differently there, mostly for hunting and fishing purposes exclusively. And that's brought us up to today. Now, you also have a drawing showing you a survey in a little more detail on the Colorado property. And in the upper left-hand corner, you see something that's owned by the state of Colorado. That's the James and John Wildlife Area. And so they've owned that for a number of years, a number of decades, actually. And what that is, is the top of Fisher Peak Mesa, it's very high elevation, generally flat. Not much canyon country or trees on that. But it has developed as a premium area for elk and deer habitat. And it's popular as a hunting destination in Colorado. You also see another map that I've given you. And on that, it shows in blue the Sugar Tree Canyon area that's owned by the City of Raton. area that's owned by the City of Raton, and then in a dark orange color, the Lake Dorothy area owned by the City of Raton, and I would say a peach color, that's the James and John area owned by the state of Colorado. Then in green, you see the Fisher Peak State Park. That's something that was acquired and converted to a Colorado State Park in the last couple of years. It's close to 20,000 acres. It's a very large area that was dedicated to public use, to state park use, and that happened through a collaborative effort that involved Colorado Outdoors, I believe it is, state of Colorado, generally their lottery money, and then also a couple of conservation groups. The Nature Conservancy and the Trust for Public Land also participated financially in that. And as they had met in Raton back in 2019 and explained to us that that's their mission is to participate in land acquisitions such as that and then dedicate that to public use. And so since that time, City of Raton has talked to New Mexico State Parks about potential land acquisition in New Mexico and enlargement of Sugary Canyon State Park. And then on that map, you see a dark-colored area at the bottom of the map, that is the Bartlett Mesa Ranch parcel that we're talking about, a little over 2,200 acres that the owner is offering for sale currently. And on behalf of the City of Raton, I have contacted a lot of stakeholders and expressed that the City of Raton would like to participate in some form of acquisition to dedicate that to public use again. And what I envisioned, it would be owned by the City of Raton, leased back to New Mexico State Parks and operated as an enlarged state park, and operate similar to how the James and John has operated as a top of a mesa without livestock use, really enhance the wildlife value, make it available for camping, hiking, trail enhancement, that kind of thing. Now, we have a group of strong local stakeholders. We also have talked to, again, the Nature Conservancy and the Trust for Public Land. We've talked to New Mexico State Parks regarding this acquisition for several years. There's been a change of personnel at State Parks, but we've also talked to the Chief of Staff at the Governor's Office, and I intend to follow up on that conversation. And what we're trying to do is pull together contributions to purchase that piece of property through all of these stakeholders. I've done something else. I have submitted a request to Senator Ben Ray Luhon's office for a congressionally-directed spending appropriation. I've asked for $4.7 million for not only the land acquisition, but some park development expenses as well. And so that is all in the resolution that I bring before the commission tonight. I think it's particularly important to express Raton's interest and Raton's leadership to the Nature Conservancy and to the Trust for Public Land to express that this is a high priority for Raton. So there's a lot of work to do on this. I've got a lot of help from Commissioner Chatterley, from the Outdoor Recreation Task Force. Emma Green is particularly passionate about this and has done a lot of work on this. We have received many letters of support from the Colorado area. I got a letter signed by the mayor and the council of the City of Trinidad today. I think that's a very strong support that we received there. We've received, of course, many letters of support here locally as well, and the resolution would express the commission's support and your priority for this proposal. Now, I'll hold up there and answer any questions you might have.
Alrighty, any questions for Mr. Berry? I guess it's something that's kind of exciting.
Commissioner Chatterley, I don't know if you have some comments. Commissioner Chatterley's put in a lot of time on discussion of this project.
It's a really exciting opportunity for us to, as you know, if we can find us funding to do this project. A lot of it offers incredible options for connecting trails with Fisher Peak, and we know that we want that to be happening, especially as an economic driver for Raton, you know, to link all these properties together and make that recreation economy grow. The letters of support have been outstanding. As Mr. Berry mentioned, the City of Trinidad, Trinidad State has given a letter, Trinidad Office of Outdoor Recreation, the Outdoor Rec Division here in New Mexico, Axidamas' office, New Mexico State Parks at the very top, and many, many others. Our community organizations here in town have supported. So I think everyone is really excited about this, and I think this is our chance to say, you know, we, as a commission, support this, and we're trying to take the lead, you know, we're trying to find the funding, and everyone else would like to see that, and just to expand our public land access, because we know we have a lot of, you know, beautiful ranching land and other things around us, and I think having that public land is a big boon for our economy.
Yeah, and I would just point out, as Scott mentioned earlier, he's had discussions, we've had discussions with the Chief of Staff, and he got it right away as an economic driver. I mean, we didn't even bring it up that way at first, and he got it. He immediately saw it. So I think we would get great support from the Governor's Office on this, I would hope.
And I should have mentioned also, Colfax County has put in their support as well.
I would point out that the Bartlett Mesa Ranch tract is adjacent to Sugary Canyon State Park, generally, as we said at the Rimrock. The asking price currently is listed at $2.7 million.
Any other comments, questions? I entertain a motion. I make a motion to approve resolution 2143. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2021-43, Bartlett Mesa Ranch Acquisition. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item zero, or O, City Manager Report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking back to something that we talked about late last year, and that is the Bird Rides or Bird Partnerships. They had addressed the commission in regard to an electric scooter rental service. They had expressed to me that they would bring the scooters to Raton if Trinidad agreed to that as well, and I think the proposal has been stalled based on that. However, I did get contact from Bird this week. We have scheduled a call for next week to coordinate the implementation or the launch of the scooters. I think it probably is not going forward at this time in Trinidad, but they did say they intended to launch in Raton, so I'll coordinate that with them. Today, myself and Jason Phillips participated in presentations to the Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization. This is in response to a call for projects for transportation project funds from the New Mexico DOT. So the legislature has funded this transportation project fund very strongly, over $100 million, and it will fund some bigger projects. The commission has passed resolutions for the improvement of the East Arterio Project. That consists of the East Frontage Road and East 10th Street on the other side of I-25, the east side of I-25, in the amount of $1.6 million. And then also, the improvement to Sugary Avenue, that's the old Highway 72 corridor that's within the city limits, at a cost of $1.2 million. So we presented those to the group today. I think there were over 40 proposals presented. Ranking was done by the NERCPO members. Our projects ranked at number five and number seven on that list. It's very likely that only one of those will get funded. We did prioritize the frontage road project, but it looks very optimistic going forward. The scoring will now be forwarded to Department of Transportation, and they will do their process. But I think the presentations went well, and our projects scored very highly in that process today. I have given the commission a copy of an email. This involved, this is between myself, Brett DeFerry of Raton Main Street, and you see that the message is from Major Silas Huff. The major is a commander of the 44th Army Band, that's New Mexico's own National Guard Band. And I'm excited to announce that they have picked Raton to visit on July 3rd and scheduled a performance in Raton, where one of a very select few communities in New Mexico that they will visit this year. They're excited about coming to Raton, and so the schedule looks like this. The National Guard Band will perform at Veterans Memorial Park on July 3rd. They'll be there from 3:00 to 3:30, and they want to honor the city's efforts in recognizing the veterans with Veterans Memorial Park. So you'll recall, that's the location off of Leesing Drive that was developed some years ago. Commissioner Chavis and Commissioner Giacomo were especially instrumental in the development of that park back then, as well as Jared Chatterley. So they want to have a ceremony at the park. They will not be there for very long, but they want to recognize those efforts. They will then set up at the La Mesa Park Airfield on July 3rd. They'll set up around 5:00, and they'll begin their performance at around 7:00. We picked that location because that is the evening of the balloon glow, and so there will be a lot of events going on there, but they're excited to come and perform at the balloon glow. Major Huff notes in his message here, he said, "I noticed there will be a pancake breakfast, and I could send some guys over there on July 4th to play the national anthem and maybe a few patriotic numbers." And so we're going to set that up as well, to perform for the pancake breakfast at the balloon rally as well. So I'm excited to announce that. We tried to get them here in 2020, and we're glad that they're following up with us now. So we will get the good word out there.
One question on that, Scott, is the pancake breakfast going to be at the Elks, like it says there, or is it going to be out at the balloon rally?
I will have to clarify that. I'm not sure offhand, so we'll find that out. That's why I avoided saying that, because I'm not sure. So I'll find out, and we'll get good detail for the public on this. But pancakes and a performance, that'd be a good time.
Yep.
One more item, Mayor. I attended a virtual meeting of the New Mexico Public Regulation Commission on June 2nd. This was in the matter of the application of Raton Natural Gas Company for expedited approval of recovery of gas costs related to the February 2021 severe weather event. Raton Natural Gas claims that it incurred an extraordinary cost of over $1 million as a result of severe weather, and they seek to recover that from local ratepayers, plus financing and administrative expenses related to the over-million-dollar extraordinary cost. So they had presented an emergency request to Public Regulation Commission. We were not notified directly of that hearing, and we got late word of it. The City of Raton was not allowed to testify at that PRC hearing. We were allowed to make comments under public comment. However, the PRC did approve that increase, and it'll work like this, that recovery will be spread over a 48-month period, and will be billed to customers of Raton Natural Gas. They can expect their gas bills to increase by around 17% during that four-year period. During the public comment period, I did make the comment that that's a large increase for a community that's, you know, economically challenged, and then coming off of the COVID restrictions. Again, that's an additional expense to our local businesses that have been restricted for more than a year. However, the PRC did grant that, so we are considering an appeal of that decision. We have a time period to make our appeal. We're talking to attorneys in regard to that, and I'll update you on that. But I didn't want the public to know that while we're working on potential utility savings in the electric versus power agreement, we're losing ground on the natural gas, at least for that four-year period. That's all I have, Mayor.
Can I ask a question here? What happened, how were they hurt?
What the claim is, is that during extreme weather in February, and you recall that Texas particularly had the loss of electricity because of extreme weather, a lot of people were without any kind of energy or any kind of power. There was a surge of over 5,000% in the spot market price of natural gas. So even though it was cold here, we didn't have that power outage. Raton Natural Gas claims that they had to pay over a five-year, five-day period, an additional $1 million to supply Raton with natural gas. That's the claim here, is that during a five-day period, there was an additional $1 million cost to them to supply natural gas. And that claim was upheld by the staff of the PRC, so.
Well, I personally think we should protest.
Absolutely. Do we have a franchise agreement with Raton Natural Gas?
We do, Mayor, and I will, you know, they're also operating off of a tariff agreement, so we have limited power in the franchise agreement. However, I will get through that information in regard to the franchise agreement. Generally, in the franchise agreement, there is a portion of receipts that are paid to the city, of course, that goes to the ratepayers as well.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Berry?
Good report, Mr. Berry.
I think the issue that we raise is that, you know, I think there's been a pretty good partnership between Raton Natural Gas and the city, and they did not tell us that this was coming, and then we were, in a timely way, they say, well, we put it in a regional newspaper, however, we were not allowed to testify at the PRC proceedings, the hearing on this. So we made brief public comments, but that's different than testimony.
Yeah, absolutely. Alrighty. Any other comments tonight? Commissioner Chatterley, anything? Commissioner Giacomo? Commissioner Chavis? Mayor Pro Tan?
Good job, Ryan, every quarter.
Oh, I said 7:30. Alright. Doing alright. I have no other comments. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.